Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Tuesday, August 7th for a Selectman meeting. 7:00 PM, Citizens Input, 7:05 Veterans Services, Purple Heart Recognition, 7:15 Public Hearing, New England Patriot Game.
7:30 Public Hearing, Nervai Inc., Change of Manager, Pledge and Transfer of Alcohol License. 7:45 GMRI Inc., Doing Business as Olive Garden Italian Restaurant, Change of Manager. 7:55 Closed Special Town Meeting Warrant. And then immediately following that, we have some action items, and we will have Board of Selectmen update, Town Manager update, Assistant Town Manager update. Mike, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
7 o'clock, anybody here for Citizens Input? Okay. Seeing none, let's roll right into our 7:05 agenda item. Mike, this is a public, Purple Heart Recognition Ceremony, so I invite Jack up, and I just want to thank Mike and Jack and the whole veterans group here in Foxborough for starting this tradition back five, six, seven years ago, and remembering our Purple Heart veterans. Putting the flags out is great. We have now two Purple Heart flags that go out. I'm gonna, I know Jack's gonna go into a little bit of detail, but I just want to give people a little bit of information on why today, why August 7th. So, Purple Heart was first created on August 7th, 1782, by the Commander in Chief of the Continental Army, General George Washington. It was then known as the Badge of Military Merit, and was awarded to three Revolutionary Soldiers in 1783. After the end of the American War of Independence, no medals were awarded until 1932, when the medal was received on the bicentennial anniversary of George Washington's birth. According to a circular dated February 22nd, 1932, Purple Heart medals were to be awarded to those wounded or killed while serving in the United States Armed Forces as a result of enemy action on or after April 5th, 1917. The United States officially joined the First World War on April 6th, 1917. And to date, I don't know how accurate this is, but there's been 1.8 million of those medals awarded. So those are our severely injured veterans, or veterans killed in action. So, it's really great that Foxborough can recognize them continuously, so thanks for keeping that going. So I'll turn it over to you guys.
Right here, where?
Yep, sure, by all means.
I'm just gonna stand right here, just talk briefly. It has been six or seven years that we've been doing this.
Could you get your on the mic a little bit?
Sure. It has been about seven years that we've been doing this Purple Heart Recognition Day in Foxborough, and it started actually with the Board of Selectmen coming to my department and asking if we could do this. And I believe that the Board was approached by the Massachusetts Order of the Purple Heart. And so we started about a 10-month process of researching. And to date, we have found that we've had 87 Purple Heart recipients, including the five that we'll recognize this evening. A couple of years ago, we had 13 still living, and tonight we have one other that I was gonna recognize first. I don't see him in the crowd yet, so I think I'll, Jack will recognize four of our WWII soldiers and sailors, and talk about those. But we're very proud to recognize, to honor them. Their names are displayed in Memorial Hall, and we have a special place in our heart for them. I'm not a Purple Heart recipient myself. I do wear the purple on this day every year, in recognition of the sacrifices they've made for our country. So Jack, I'll turn it over to you to recognize our WWII members.
Alrighty, thank you very much. The first name I would bring up is Harvey Nesbit. He was active in Boy Scouts and High School, and he joined the Navy following his 1937 high school graduation. He was an apprentice seaman at the Naval Training Station in Newport, Rhode Island. And when his tour was complete, he re-enlisted as a Second Class Electronics Mate and was assigned to courses at Submarine School in New London, Connecticut. He graduated in April 26th, 1941, and was assigned to Pearl Harbor. He was there that day when the Japanese attacked. He was assigned to the Submarine Corps Vena, and would carry out many, many missions of protecting the military bases, preventing further attacks on the island. On a routine mission, they left Pearl Harbor, November 4th, 1943, to patrol the waters of the Western Pacific, seeking purposely to engage the enemy. Following a fuel stop November 6th, he was never heard from again. There was no distress signal, no reported sightings, no sign of any wreckage, absolutely just disappeared. So the crew was reported as missing in action and subsequently declared dead. Harvey left his wife behind, as well as a son he had never seen, who they named Harvey I would also bring to your attention Victor We Met. Victor had a goal of becoming a Navy pilot, and he entered the Navy in 1937, following his graduation from Foxborough High. Interesting, his brother Halea shared his dream, and they actually enlisted together and received their preliminary training down at Squanton. They both received their Pilot's Commission in 1939. At the end of their tour, they re-enlisted, received additional training in Pensacola, Florida. Halea was then assigned to a destroyer flotilla in the Atlantic aboard the USS Barry. Victor was assigned to the USS WASP, a brand-new aircraft carrier commissioned in 1940. And Barry's ship held off many clashes with enemy U-boats in the Atlantic Ocean, but he later survived the sinking of the Barry and received a Presidential Citation for his With Victor assigned to the WASP, they played a major role in many battles in the Pacific, bringing in additional air support for softening up advances on the enemy territory and protecting Allied forces in transit. On August of 1942, Victor took off from the deck of the WASP on a routine search mission. He never returned, never a sound, never declared any emergency signals, again, no wreckage, nothing. He was declared missing in action, but later designated as killed in action, and based on the date of the day he went missing, he was Foxborough's first casualty in WWII I, and also the first Boston College graduate to become victim of the war.
Note, if I can just interject for a second, some of these folks that Jack is reading about actually did not receive the Purple Heart Medal, because normally the Purple Heart Medal is pinned on the recipient at the hospital. And obviously, these folks were either missing or killed in action, they never made it to a hospital. And that's why it's so important that we recognize them here today. And, you know, if there are any family members or friends, I know we have one friend here that'll come up when we read the name, and will present the citation to Earl. But if there are any other family members, please do come up when we read off their
Another interesting name on the list here is Everett White. He actually had intended to join the service in WWII I, but he had to wait until his 18th birthday. Well, just not that many days before his 18th birthday, the Amistice was signed. There was no war to enlist in. It was over. So he waited a while, but then he joined the military anyway. And he was very, very serious about it, because he served 20 years, and then did 10 years in the reserves. But he, after all of that, he was very happy to return to his bachelor quarters on Mill Street in Foxborough. But growing up in Foxborough, he, rejoining the military for the WWII, he had some assignments in the Philippine Islands. And when the Japanese overran the Mugen Garrison and overran Manchuria, American diplomats had to be removed, and he volunteered for that mission, but some other troops fed him to it. So he then went on to additional training, and they would put him through some amphibious forces practice of landings down on the Cape. I think they were getting ready for a few more landings than he had had. They arrived back at Fort Devens at 2:00 AM on a Sunday morning, totally exhausted. But that Sunday morning happened to be December 7th, 1941. So they were awakened after a few hours sleep and given the news of what had happened. So the fate of the world was hanging in the balance. They quickly gave him some more training in amphibious landings, and he was aboard the Queen Elizabeth, heading for England. He served in the African Campaign, and he served in the Italian Campaign. That campaign was so critical, because before the US could get involved in Europe, they had to deprive Germany of one of its strongest allies, the Italian Army. And they did some extraordinary things over there in Italy, in Sicily. In the Italian Campaign, they had one hill that they wanted to take. They had some troops coming in from the far side, but they told Everett White to pick four men, three men to join him, and they would come in from the less side. As they approached the hill, one by one, the three men with him fell to wounds. He continued on his own. Suddenly, he found himself confronted by 75 armed Italian troops. Much to his surprise, they must have sensed the change in the weight of the battle, they instantly threw up their hands and surrendered. So then the panic shifted to, what am I gonna do? How do I do this? So he had to call in some help and take care of the new prisoners. So that was, that was a very, very interesting development. So about that time, they were thinking that here is Mr. White among the oldest, certainly, of any troops they had over there. And they thought that they better move some of these guys back and begin to ship them home. But they thought, before he left, they would give him one more assignment. That assignment just happened to be the largest military grouping of troops in the history of the human race. We call it D-Day. So here he is, one more assignment. It took two ships to bring all of his unit across the canal. And as they're approaching the shore, he had been in combat before, he had a sense of what they were facing. So he took off his pack, which would have weighted him down if he ends up in the water. Finally, they got close enough, they finally got into the landing ship, they're heading to the beach, all of a sudden, there's an explosion. The propeller on the landing ship had hit a German mine. The ship went up, guys in the water, many of them injured. Everett was able to retain his rifle, retain his helmet, and he knew the best thing he could do now is to get to the beach and recoup. So he did make it to that, to the beach. Years later, when I interviewed him, and we were talking about his arrival on the beach for D-Day, he never mentioned the explosion in the landing craft. He never mentioned getting blown up and landing in the water. He was so angry with the German government, because when his pack went to the bottom in the English Channel, it contained his pin-up picture of Zazu Pitts. He was furious. And I, so as I'm writing this story, we published it in the paper shortly after, I went into my wife and I explained, when they gave us the first motion picture machine to use at the now Ophium Theater, they had also given us some lantern slides that they used to promote coming attractions at the movie. I said, I wonder. I mean, I didn't know what Zazu Pitts looked like, but we went up there on a Sunday afternoon, we're sitting there, and we're looking at these slides, and pretty soon, there she is. So I had this big print made, took it down to his house, and it hung there the rest of his life. So the other name that we bring forward to you is Clinton Davison. Very unique history with Clinton. He actually entered the service through Mansfield. However, he was three generations of Foxborough. His grandmother was a teacher of legendary proportions down at the Payne School. She was actually also principal. She taught there many, many years. His mother, Ruby Davison, who was living in Mansfield, was teaching at the Center School here in Foxborough. And when Ruby retired, the people in East Foxborough begged to have her daughter come down and be the teacher there. So she moved to Foxborough, Clinton with her. He actually graduated from Foxborough High School, but then for some other compelling reasons, abandoned, went back to Mansfield. But Clinton became part of the Air Force Unit that was going to England. And we had families in town who had relatives in England, so anyone that was going over on the bombing groups, they would get the names of their relatives to them, so that they could meet them and make contacts and make friends over in England. And the bombing units, those planes were able to get all the way to Berlin and back. So they stayed in England the entire war. The fighter planes had to keep moving, because their military capacity was much less. So Clinton was over there and making regular bombing runs over Germany. He met an English girl by, through the family here in Foxborough, and she was a volunteer ambulance driver. All these nights, the German rockets were coming over England. She was out picking up the wounded and helping people get to air raid shelters and things like that. And they developed a relationship and had agreed that she would come to America after the war, and they would make their life here together. One day, Clinton went on a mission. His plane did not return. There's very, very little known about what happened. It was very much a mystery. After the war, a few pieces of it came together, but essentially, there could be no thorough accounting of what happened to that plane. But through the volunteers in France who decorate the American graves at Normandy, I was able to get in touch with a French history professor who had documented the location of all the American planes that went down. And here, they identify Clinton's plane has gone down in this particular village. So they went out, and as was described, the plane came down, slid, went into a ravine, and burned. They, they were in that ravine, they found pieces of the plane, everything, they said, I think we'd better go to the farmer and let him know we're in his backyard, what we're doing. They knocked on the door, identified themselves, and the farmer launched into a description of the day that plane went down. He was a 12-year-old kid out in the field with his father, and this plane comes down over their head, hits a wire, snaps off a wing, catapults down into the ravine. German soldiers came, they removed the living from the plane, counted the dead, but they were short one person. They said to the farmer, if he's here, if you're hiding him, you will die. By the next day, they came back, and there was Clinton Davison's body in the plane. So we go on from there, that the English girl, when Clinton went missing, she came here to live with his, to be with his mother, as they petitioned every source known to try and get information. She had a memorial for Clinton every year at the Episcopal Church, and Reverend Pitt was on vacation in France one year, and went into a small cemetery and saw Clinton Davison's name on a gravestone. The Germans actually took those bodies, buried them, and reported their burial, which was very, very unusual. So Clinton was discovered, moved to another cemetery, and then eventually to Normandy. So that is the story there. I then, just, excuse me, as an aside, I was able to find a survivor of the crash out in Montana. And his parents, daughters had no worry about my trying to talk to him, but they said, just fair warning, he's never said a word to us about the war. But we, stressing the importance that stories like this should not be forgotten. He spoke, and spoke, and spoke. So we had the whole issue of how they went down, what it was like in the crash, what it was like when the Germans put the wounded out, put him in the hospital, and then into a prison camp. So we brought the story full cycle. But unfortunately, as all these answers come to be, it was too late for his English fiancee, and it was too late for his mother, they had passed away. But the survivor of the crash out in Montana said, when they took him first to a farmhouse, a young girl in that family tried to help him. So he gave her some things out of his survival kit, and she hid them under her clothing so she wouldn't get in trouble. And when he told me that story, I'm thinking of the farm family that had the eyewitness of the crash. Could this little girl have been his sister? So now my adrenaline is pumping, and I go back to the volunteers, and they determine easily, no, it wasn't that same family. Well then, who was it? They did locate the family, but the little girl, as an elderly woman, had just passed away two and a half years earlier. We almost came to be able to unite Sergeant Sparks. But that family, who for so many years knew nothing, has since gone to France, met the eyewitness and visited the crash site and the memorials that the people of that village put up to that plane. So Clinton Davison is very, very much a Foxborough hero through his family, through his relationships. And I think it would be fitting to have him as being recognized as a Purple Heart recipient. So I think, if I could just do one more aside, I mean, it's so appropriate that this National Award gets localized, it means so much more. But there's even more to that. When this first started, and we are contacting families, I got in touch with one family who actually knew very, very little about their dad's crash in Europe. He had since passed away, but I got them all the details. And that started them going through some of his remains, some documents, letters, and things like that. And they found this special tablet, there was an American company that set up some type of recording device, so the troops overseas could get a recording made and send it back to the home. Now, I mean, it was such a crude thing by today's standards, and how in the world were you gonna find anything capable of playing this? But I thought I knew that answer, because I went to Paul Beck and Mike Weber, I think those guys can do anything. It took a while, but pretty soon, they couldn't repair the damage caused, but pretty soon, that family could, in the comfort of their own home, hear his voice from Europe. Hello, family. I hope you're doing well. I'm okay. So there are many, many, many benefits to this program. Thank you.
Appreciate you guys keeping it going.
This time, I'd like to see if we have any family or friends of the folks that we've just mentioned who are here. I did see, please come up.
Yeah, we have, Earl Ferguson is here with his daughter. Earl is-
He really didn't do it.
Earl is part of the, part of the White family.
Yes. So I'd like to, we have certificates for each of these folks, and I'd like to present one of them to Earl. And this is how it reads.
If you wanna sit.
I'll get close enough to the microphone. The certificate reads- You should have used the Earl, yeah. Yeah. The certificate says, Everett White, WWII Purple Heart recipient. The town of Foxborough is proud to posthumously honor your service and sacrifice above and beyond the call of duty. Your selfless service and sacrifice is the very heart that a great nation was built upon, and your example stands as a testament to the price of freedom, independence, and democracy we enjoy today. We, the Protected and Privileged, thank you for your loyal, dedicated service and sacrifice on behalf of the United States of America, the Commonwealth, and the town of Foxborough. Presented on behalf of a grateful community the 7th day of August, 2018, signed by myself, the Veteran Services Director, and Chris Mitchell, the Chairman of the Foxborough Board of Selectmen, to Everett White's friend, Earl Ferguson. I wanna see if, did Shane, Shane here?
Thank you.
Shane didn't make it, but I do wanna, maybe he's watching on TV. I talked to him on the phone last night, and he said he would make it, but, you know, he may be still at work. But I do wanna read his certificate. Shane served in the Army in both Iraq and Afghanistan. His name is Shane Cosette. He served during the Global War on Terror. He was injured in Afghanistan after already having- He was injured in Afghanistan after already having served a tour in Iraq with the combat engineers. He was parachute qualified. He was based out of Fort Bragg, North Carolina. He was combat field first aid qualified. I'm sure he has many other qualifications and certifications that I'm unaware of. He did have several Army Commendation Medals, as well as campaign medals, in addition to his Purple Heart Medal that he was awarded. I don't know how he was injured. Shane and I have not yet met. I've been chasing Shane for a couple of years now, and like many of our proud service members, he's not looking for any recognition or anything at this time. But I do want to read his certificate, and then we'll hand the meeting back over to Mr. Chairman. Shane Cosette, Global War on Terror, Purple Heart recipient, and his name is engraved on our new memorial on the common. The town of Foxborough takes great pleasure in honoring your service and sacrifice above and beyond the call of duty. Your selfless service and sacrifice is the very heart that our great nation was built upon, and your example stands as a testament to the price of freedom, independence, and democracy we enjoy today. We, the protected and privileged, thank you for your loyal, dedicated service and sacrifice on behalf of the United States of America, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the town of Foxborough. Signed this day by myself and Chairman Mitchell.
Could I mention Frankie? I had asked Mike if he would make another one on the Everett White. He has a relative in town, I guess we would have to say, he was a great-grandnephew. He treasures a story of Everett White in the war. He's Frankie Munshewski, and he carries, has a copy of that story I did so many years ago about Everett, and is so proud that his family is connected. And he had trouble making arrangements to get here tonight, but it would be very, very fitting that he has a certificate as well.
So I do see Frank often, he's working up at Rock Hill Cemetery as well as St. Mary's Cemetery. And I do have a copy of the certificate for you to give to him, so I'll get that right now.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you all for... Jack, I appreciate you for explaining some history to us. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jack. Stay here just a second, I'll get you that certificate.
Right. Next, we have a public hearing, New England Patriots home games. So you want to read the public hearing to us?
All right, the Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to MGL Chapter 140, Section 181, and Section 181A, we, in Chapter 136, Section 4, vote of the Foxborough, vote of the town of Foxborough, Chapter 229, and also stadium rules and regulations, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, August 7, 2018, beginning at 7:15 in the Gala Meeting Room, Town Hall, 40 South Street, to review the applications submitted by the New England Patriots LLC for the 2018 New England Patriots regular season home games, including preseason and potential home playoff games, and on-premises practice. This event is proposed for Gillette Stadium. Application for this event is on file at the office of the Selectmen. All interested parties are allowed to attend.
Good evening.
Nice to be here. Just here is with Gillette Stadium.
Have you ever had a game at Gillette Stadium?
Couple, two, three.
George Bell, Stadium Advisory Committee.
So here before you this evening for the 2018 New England Patriots season, it will be two preseason games, eight regular season games, and hopefully, two potential postseason games. Usually what I'll before you guys for this, I have some sort of massive stadium project, because we're always moving and shaking, but this year, we're actually doing some smaller-scale upgrades to the building, so there really aren't any significant changes to our operation. So just to go through the request for the license, we will request parking lots four hours prior to kickoff, we'll operate our gates two hours prior to kickoff, we will continue to use the full body scans at every gate. Our clear bag policy is now in its fourth year, so we're at a good rhythm where people know, anticipate it in advance, know how to show up at the gates without prohibited items and with the appropriate bags. We have our Gillette Stadium and our New England Patriots app, which we continue to develop, and both of which are huge assets for fans in the building. It allows some exclusive replay options, and it also lets you look at what menu option might be at the closest concession stand to you, and which restroom has the shortest line, which is really valuable. We also communicate to all of our season ticket members and all of our ticket purchasers anywhere between one to four days prior to the event. So if there is anything that's shifted, if there's anything that's changed, if we anticipate moving a gate, or a lot time, or anything that we might have changed between the time that you purchased your tickets and the week before the event, you'll get that notification, and it's been an effective way for us to communicate. We continue to see the rise of rideshare operations. So we'll continue to operate our rideshare lot, which is over in our South Retail Complex. We work exclusively with Uber. We do allow Lyft and other rideshare programs to use the space, though, to create a safe and secure pickup and drop-off location for people choosing rideshare. And we will operate the train from both Boston and Providence for every game. The biggest changes for the stadium and for the franchise this year in our operation, we are installing some wind walls up at the 300 level to, so the spaces that we had walked through a couple of years ago, the Union Point and the JetBlue Lounges on the 300 level, they've been really well received, fans love them, they gather in that space, but anybody who's been on the 300 level in December knows that the wind just whips right through there, and it can be absolutely brutal. So hopefully, the wind walls that we're putting in will help create a little bit more of an enclosure and warm up the space a little bit during those colder, late-season games. We are switching or pushing our mobile ticket platform, so now we've had mobile ticketing in the building for a year. This year, we're actually publicizing it more, sort of going on an educational campaign. If you are a season ticket member, you still have a physical ticket, which you can choose to use that, or you can go mobile. So we still have the physical component, and we do anticipate most of our season ticket members will use those physical tickets. They do, they like that experience. But it's nice to have the mobile option and to continue to upgrade our equipment and let people know that that option's in place. It really helps cut down on fraud. And then, we started, this past January was our first one, we started a new quarterly forum. So we're now meeting on a quarterly basis with all of the Patriots' season ticket members that are also Foxborough residents. So we kind of sat back towards the conclusion of last season and wanted to think of, just kind of brainstorm ways to better communicate, to better understand what the needs of our two most important groups are, which would be our season ticket members that are also our neighbors here in Foxborough. So we've had three so far. We've had them at different spots in the building, and we've just invited our season ticket members to come up and to have dinner and drinks on us, and then we sit in a very casual panel-style presentation and talk about different facets of our operation, how they can improve. It's been, for us, as the venue and the team, it's been a really valuable operation, because we've learned things, problems, things we're doing, we're not doing the best, things that we're doing great that we didn't realize. So it's a really nice, real-time focus group. We've had about, between 100 and 130 people come to each of our forums so far, and we continue, we plan on continuing them.
Have you guys taken any of the suggestions and implemented them?
We have, yeah, we have. One of the ones that came from our first forum, because like I said, it was in January, was, out of all of the season ticket, the Foxborough resident season ticket members that had attended that forum, none of them had actually been chosen for the Super Bowl lottery in all the times that we've gone. So it was nice, so we kind of took a step back and did some shuffling, and were able to get two tickets just, and we did a Foxborough exclusive season ticket member raffle. So we had some very worthy season ticket members come out to Minnesota and have a good time. So that's about it.
George, you guys?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to comment, there are three Sunday night games, so it's a, be a busy season from a traffic standpoint. One of them's on a Thursday and two on Sunday, right? The 8:20 games, which creates a bit more traffic stress. And I also just wanted to comment that the town's public safety officials have been working very closely with the federal and state agencies to enhance their security training and protocol to assure safe events. So, you know, happy to hear that. And the last thing is that they continue to publicize, which I think is a great thing, the texting of any problem that anybody at the stadium might run into, that they could, through a text, get help. So I think that's been a great feature. The committee recommended for the board to approve.
Anybody on the board have any? It's a public hearing, anybody in the audience? Seeing none, Leah, you want to close the public hearing?
Yeah, move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any discussion on closing the public hearing? Seeing none, all is in favor?
All right, move to approve New England Patriots LLC for the 2018 New England Patriots season application for 10 home games, preseason and regular season, and potential home playoff games.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Thank you.
Back a trophy.
Thank you.
Thanks, George. All right, Leah, do you want to read the public hearing, the next one?
The Board of Selectmen of the town of Foxborough, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to MGL Chapter 138, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, August 7, 2018, at 7:30 PM in the Gala Meeting Room, 40 South Street, Foxborough, Mass. For a change in application, change of manager, pledge and transfer of alcohol restaurant license, as well as common, particular and entertainment license from N, sorry, D and N Corporation, doing business as Olive and Mint Ambrosia, to Washington Street, Foxborough, Mass. Manager Nicholas Panagopoulos, sorry, what's his name, to Nirv Inc., doing business as Olive and Mint Ambrosia, weddings and events, to Washington Street, Foxborough, Mass. Manager Makesh Patel. All interested persons are invited to attend the hearing.
Okay, and just prior to the meeting, we got a note from their lawyer. They requested us to open this and move it, continue it to our August 21 meeting. So can I have a motion to continue this?
Sure, so move to continue the hearing to August 21, 2018.
Second.
Motion made, seconded to continue. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. This next one is not a public hearing, right? Olive Garden, change of manager? So I want to take that one. Okay. So next up, GMRI Inc., doing business as Olive Garden Italian Restaurant, number 1808, change of manager from Jade Ross to Shalom S. Bennett. Is anybody here from there?
Hi, John.
Would you like to come up? Just have a seat and state your name for the record.
My name is Shalom Bennett.
And you are going to be, or are the new manager?
I am the new general manager. I've been in position about a little over a month. I've been with Olive Garden about 12 years in the industry since I was 14, washing dishes. I've had zero alcohol violations or any issues in my restaurants related to alcohol. I can tell you that my first month in the Foxborough Olive Garden, I have recertified our Olive Garden standards to prevent, we have certain standards in place, I just re-implified those and made sure they were in place. Some of them were a little bit off standard, but like white straws and non-alcoholic beverages and things like that, we have some pretty high standards to ensure that we don't serve anybody alcohol. So it was a big, they were doing a great job, but just a couple focuses, and we're really back on track, and things are going well.
Good. So you've been with Olive Garden for...
About 12 years.
12 years?
Yeah, yeah. And before that, Joe's American Bar &amp; Grill, which was a Back Bay Restaurant Group, I was a manager there for about three years, and then in the industry as a server for about 15 years, and a sous chef, and moved my way up, so.
So you liked the industry?
Yeah, it's a passion for hospitality. So I almost was a burnt-out server, and then I went into fine dining and saw how great it was to wow folks, and then that just kind of kept me in the game, so.
So you've been at the Foxborough location, you said, a month?
It's about a month and a half, yep. I just moved up from the Methuen location. I live in Lawrence, Massachusetts, right next to Methuen, and so we transferred up. It happens often that we move around as managers.
Has anybody in Foxborough talked to you about the Foxcares Group?
Foxcares Group? I have not heard about Foxcares.
You'll be getting a phone call.
Fantastic, fantastic.
Foxcares Group is a group of restaurants in town that get together and share best practices. They do self-evaluations, they do self-policing.
Wow.
They're all about responsible service.
Nice.
So it's a good group, they usually meet quarterly.
And is that at all involved with, like, the Chamber of Commerce? I mean, are those folks involved at all?
No, it's just run by a bunch of restaurants that want to share best practices.
Well, we've got a great, a lot, and I'll talk to my director, and if I can be involved in that, absolutely.
Yeah.
I think most of the meetings take place up around Patriot Place, right?
Yeah. I could even host some. Yep. So you'll be getting a phone call from them.
Anybody have any questions on the application?
All right, move to approve GMRI Inc., doing business as Olive Garden Italian Restaurant, change of manager to Shalom S. Bennett.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
I appreciate that.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you so much.
Here for me soon.
Mark, are you guys all here and ready?
Yep.
I don't know. Got a schedule, David.
Like to see that.
How you doing?
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Mark Forensic, Chairman of the Foxborough Historical Commission.
I'm Mary Lou Hawkins.
We would like Mary Lou to join the commission. She's been in town since 1978, a long-time resident. She's a Realtor, I would think that background will be very helpful, since they seem to be tearing down every nice old building in town, so.
Like, and I don't really like that, okay? I love being from Foxborough. I was originally from Dedham, but we've been here so long that I really feel like it's my hometown, you know what I mean? So anyway, and I love the history of Foxborough, and I'm proud to be, you know, a member of Foxborough town. So anyway.
Excellent. Anybody on the board have any questions? Make a motion?
All right, move to appoint Mary Lou Hawkins as Associate Member to the Foxborough Historical Commission.
Thank you.
Second.
Thanks a lot.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for stepping up.
That was easy.
While Mark was here, I just wanted to point out that when people walk into Town Hall, I know that there's an interesting piece of Foxborough history in the foyer right now. And I've had a lot of people ask, particularly all our receptionists that are out there, all getting a lot of questions about it. So I think at some point, Mark, and maybe we can impose upon the commission to give us a brief description of that piece?
Yeah, I mean, I would say more about it.
Yeah.
It was donated in something like 1927, I think.
Okay.
It's the model for the spinning wheel down to...
It's actually in the seal itself.
Yeah. But it's, and I'll do more days, so I can find something like this, as long as I have it.
It's quite, it's quite an interesting piece, and we get a lot of questions about it, and we certainly want to give the right description for it, you know, and it's a important piece of Foxborough memorabilia, yeah.
Very nicely displayed, put it on the place.
Yeah, it is a nice spot for it.
Yeah. Great.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Yeah, have a good night.
Have a good night.
Hopefully, it's going to cool off.
I'll second that.
Next up, on the agenda is close special town meeting ward, discuss and vote.
So just move to close the special town meeting ward?
Yep, that's what we're discussing.
Right.
Anybody on the board have any discuss, questions on anything that's on here?
Mr. Chairman, just if I could just sort of start the conversation off, and say, this is a lot more items than we thought were going to be on the agenda, so we're going to take a look at this on a staff level tomorrow to see if some of them can be deferred to the annual, because it's a tight window between now and when the meeting's actually going to occur. And I realize that we're in the middle of summer, so it's tough to get people together. together. So I, I'm being obviously very sensitized to the concerns the board had raised during the last discussion we had on this very issue. So we will certainly go back and look at this tomorrow. This is the first day we've really had it all together because today is the last day for people to submit things. So there were 17 articles at this point. And some of them, I know right off the bat, will probably drop off, but it's still probably in the 12 to 10 range anyways. Some of them are things that really are timely and we do need to address, but if some can be pushed off into the annual, we certainly will take, recommend that we do that. So we don't, so I try and limit the amount of meetings that are necessary to review the warrant.
Yeah, we don't want to overburden the ad com either.
So we are sensitized to that. And I just want to make sure that right up front, you knew that. That was our concern. So we will, we'll do what we can to try and trim that for you. So I, but I do recommend that you close the warrant so we don't get any more at this point, so.
And then we can always.
You can always trim it back if you need to. Or if you can add to reopen it, you could do that too. But I don't see any particular reasons that I know of at this point to reopen it. But I do think a motion to close it would be appropriate at this point.
Can I, through the chair, a question?
Yep.
The discussion that we had, obviously it's August and shooting for October. This hasn't been out to the public at all?
Not at all, no.
So could you spend, if I was over here with the chairman, just a minute to go through them? Because there's.
Sure.
Trying to get information out to the public is hard enough, but if you don't even mention it at this meeting, it's two more weeks before they even can see it.
Right. So the first four articles relate to collective bargaining agreements, potentially, whether they're, you know, whether they're finalizing or be ready for the town meeting. One is for the police. Another one's for the library contract, the firefighters' contract. Then the other one is for the public safety dispatches. The fifth article is for a fire truck that we just received a grant, an $810,000 grant from the federal government to pay for a new fire truck. So we're going to have to receive that effectively. And actually, because it's a capital item, it has to be, the money would have to be appropriate to purchase it. The borough school building is actually a two-article piece. One is to authorize the borrowing for the project. And the other one is for the, also, and the second article is to transfer available funds to help pay for the project. The third, the next one is the acceptance of Chapter 137, the Act that allows the communities to pay public employees in military service. Perhaps Mike can speak to the next, actually, the next three items since he presented them. Do you want to address those, Mike?
Certainly. So the first one is an article that I brought before town meeting about five or six years ago. And it was defeated by a very narrow margin, I think a couple of votes. That article is a local option that allows towns to pay public employees the difference between their base salary, if they're deployed, and their base military pay. And that's, that's the bottom line. At the time, I do think that there was a lot of energy to pass that. But I will say our town manager at the time was someone who was subject to recall with the National Guard. And I think there was some concern about paying the difference between, you know, his high town manager's salary and, you know, and what he would have made as a staff sergeant. This is one that I think makes a lot of sense for folks that work in our highway department, police department, fire department, and other places in town. I think this is a low dollar item. And I will come up with an estimate of what I think that would cost.
Is this a state statute or a federal statute?
This is state.
State statute.
Right. The next one is also a local option that the Home Act allows us to adopt. I'm actually going to be pulling this one off the warrant, you know, just because we need to trim some down and because this is one that can wait till spring. But I'll tell you briefly what it is. This is one that a lot of communities have adopted since the state passed this law. And it allows people to check off on their taxes or other payables to excises, that sort of thing, that they can up the amount and make a donation that can go towards veteran services, specifically to pay veterans and their family members, dependents of low income to help with medical expenses, that sort of thing. So it has been a popular one with many other communities. And I'm going to defer that one until spring till we can research a little more and make some, a little more room on this, on this warrant. And then the last one is simply, also part of the Home Act of 2016, and it allows for a public service scholarship to extend support to benefit direct dependents of prisons of war. And I'll be getting the specific language in publicizing the rest of that in the weeks to come.
Okay. Thanks, Mark.
Welcome.
So the next one is dealing with canvases and solicitors by law, which is something we've been working on. We've actually had this up a couple times for consideration at town meetings. And we've deferred on it because we just simply weren't ready. This time, we think we are ready. Interesting enough, we've actually circulated it enough around the different boards and committees and town departments. And we all seem to have agreed and town council's been involved from the beginning of drafting of this. So we think we're in pretty better shape than we have been in this particular article. So we may try and push forward on this because it has been really well drafted and well thought of at this time. But it wouldn't be appropriate for me to go into detail at this time, but we know we spent a lot of time preparing for it.
Is that by law something you can share with the board?
Yes, I certainly will. So we will, tonight was strictly a listing of those, but we will get you the actual language once we have the actual articles. And we'll get you that as soon as possible. The marijuana bylaw, there's some fixes in the language that are being proposed by the planning board. I haven't actually seen those fixes yet, but I know that it's something that's been sort of a moving target over the past couple of years. The other one's add school street to the design review district. I think that was something that we picked up during, during the most recent downtown review of the fire station in particular and the nursing, I said the funeral home, rather. And so as a result, we're looking to include that. Amend the brew pub definition, which would actually bring that language up to date. Believe it or not, that's, that's been a very much of a moving target too, because there's been different, new definitions that are being proposed. Because it's a relatively new concept that it seems to be catching on and becoming very popular in terms of an economic development project. The next one is limiting the vape shops to certain districts. And the goal is to exclude those effectively from downtown, developing vape shops in the downtown. And then we'd probably limit them to more of the Route 1 area as opposed to the downtown area. Another, next one is the street acceptance of King Philip Place. That road is, has met the standards and is acceptable for consideration. Again, one, we could do it now perhaps, but we could also wait on it. But certainly, if it's ready to go, I can't imagine there'd be a lot of debate over it. Revised the existing Zone 2 boundary in the water resource protection district. That's something that's been worked on by the, by the water department. And they specifically have asked for that consideration to change some of the requirements that have been talked about in the, during the past year. So again, I'll defer to them to give the specifics, but that was something we just received today. So we haven't had a chance to really review it internally yet. So those are the, that's it. Again, total of 17 articles. Some, maybe some we can defer on. I know some will not be ready, particularly as it relates to some collective bargaining issues. But I know that, you know, it's a lot, it's a big agenda, but I'm not sure. There's a lot of controversial things in there. But again, you never know what that can mean. Once you get into it and what the debates and what the concerns are.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions on this? All right. Leah, you want to make a motion to?
Yeah, move to close the special town meeting warrant.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion to close the warrant? Seeing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. And we'll, we'll get you the information as soon as we have it available to us.
Anybody have anything for selectmen's update?
DPW poured the slabs for the picnic tables up at the Common today.
Oh, did they?
Yeah, it really looks, I think it's going to look up. Pretty cool.
Nice, nice. Love to check that out. And then just thanks to the Kraft family. I didn't go, but I know a few board members did to the Monday training camp that was open to Foxborough residents. Nice of them to put that out to everybody. I heard it was good.
Very interesting.
All right, town managers' update?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few items for you. First of all, I do want to make note of the fact, and I think I mentioned it earlier, that we did receive a significant grant from the federal government, one, thankfully, that was the fire department, the fire chief and his staff, particularly Deputy Kelleher and Lieutenant Bettini for writing that grant and submitting it on behalf of the community. It's rare to get those kind of grants for equipment, for ladders, for communities of this size. So I give them a lot of credit for submitting that and they, they were able to prevail. And I was actually, Congressman Kennedy was actually in town for an hour or two last week. And I would head up to him to thank him personally on behalf of the community for his support of that grant too, which was really helpful. And we really do appreciate that, that consideration. We do have a new human services director. I've appointed a gentleman by the name of Mark Craig. And he's a gentleman who will be, actually, before you at your next meeting. You'll be able to meet him personally. Mark survived the process, the pretty rigorous process. Mike actually participated in one of his first, first actual recruitment process. And he, we started with 81 candidates, whittled it down to about 10 candidates that were, that were considerable for, considered for telephone interviews. We narrowed that further down to six face-to-face interviews. Our panel included representatives from the Council on Aging, as well as the Friends of Group. And then Chairman Mitchell actually participated in the last round, which was whittled down to three finalists. It was a difficult decision in the end because it was, we had three very, very good finalists. One was an internal, in-house candidate. And we made it very difficult for us to make that decision. But this was an individual which provided us with a unique, I think, really a unique opportunity for us to go in a, in a new direction with how we, how we, how we view human services and council on aging services and how that service can be brought, actually did become more popular in the community. This gentleman, and you'll get to hear this from him personally next week, but, two weeks rather, but his story was actually quite interesting. He's, he's been the director of what is known as in Randolph, he comes from the community of Randolph, Massachusetts, where they built a community center that is, that houses council on aging, human services, veterans, and recreation all under one roof. And the facility is, how they meld the deaths facility has actually turned a population of 500 seniors into 1,500 seniors that are active in the community now because of that. So what they've done was they've really sort of developed this new community interest around this program that's pretty widespread and very, very popular. And this gentleman was, I talked to the town manager this afternoon. And he said, you know, he says, I apologize for pilfering one of your, your great staff members. But he said, he said, but I will tell you, he says, you guys are great judge of character. This kid is a terrific candidate. And he said, you will really appreciate the kind of work that he brings to you. And he said, I'm going to miss him. But he said, I can tell you what he's done for us has just been tremendous. So we're very, very excited to have him on board. And I'm looking forward to having him come to meet with you in a couple of weeks.
He starts right after Labor Day?
He will start the day after Labor Day. So he'll be actually in town on the 21st. Going to have him actually meet the staff at the COA, also meet the COA board if possible, and then some of the other folks associated with the association, including the Friends of Group, if we can, if we can make that, make that happen. And also, I just want to say that I've appointed Pam Maguire as the interim director. Pam is, is going to serve in that role till right up until the day that Mark starts his new role. And I'm very grateful for her ability to step up and deal with that, that role and responsibility, which is very important for us in carrying the organization forward for the next 30 days or so, or less. So grateful for her for doing that. Semerick, I'm pleased to report that the Semerick Board did, did select the High Rock site here in Foxborough as their new home for the, for the building of their new facility. That will be, we're moving forward to that, getting that resolved. And we purchased the, we're in the process of purchasing the building for a total of $10. So I just want everybody to know that we did, we did have to pay for it, but it was, it was just to secure the actual, actual deal itself was, it was a $10 transaction. So we're very, very excited about that. And we're hearing some really, really interesting, interest in how that building may evolve over the very short time, timeframe that we're actually going to have it. So it's going to be interesting to see how that plays out.
Bill, if I might just cut in, I had the opportunity last week to go with Bill up to High Rock for the first time. It's a pretty impressive building up there. If you haven't had a chance to go up there and take a look.
Happy to take anybody up there too that want to see it. It's really quite something.
It's incredible, the potential that that building has.
Yeah.
It's really neat.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it's an exciting opportunity for us. We did send a letter. I think I provided it to all of you. A letter is a follow-up to the meeting we had last week with the NRRA and the Positive Reservoir Group. And we did follow it up with a letter to the state asking for a delay in the, in the hearing and the closing of the, of the response period. We haven't heard anything back yet, but we did send it out almost within days, two days, I think, of when the meeting was actually held. We did, we do, we are following up to see if we can get them here actually on the 21st meeting.
Yeah, I got, I got an email out. I'm waiting to hear back.
Okay, great. All right, thank you.
To get you that information.
That'd be great, thank you.
Will we try to get here?
The LSP.
The LSP that they were using, try and get them here for that, for that meeting.
Have we tried reaching out to Schneider to talk to them about anything, or?
We haven't yet, but I think we were, the first thing was the order of business was to try and get the thing delayed. And then we could do that if that's the desire of the board. I can actually reach out to Snyder and talk to him about that.
I mean, Dave mentioned, I mean, it's not a bad place to, to just say, hey, you know, let's talk.
I think it's a great idea, but I think listening to NRRC's LSP would give us a whole, a lot more information too, before a meeting like that.
An education before the discussion, so to speak.
Exactly. But I think we absolutely should meet with them.
Yeah, I can certainly have an initial conversation and reach out to them and see, you know, let them know that we are pursuing it a little bit further because we feel that there's some unfinished business on this and we want to try to address it if we can. And we'd like to do it proactively with them if we can, proactively in a positive way.
Yeah, I did end up getting a letter in the mail. So I don't know if you guys got it from them, basically saying, you know, that the documents were posted online, but not me there. So it was just a little bit different than the expectation, I think, you know, when you were generating the address. So hopefully people receive that mailing and those documents.
Yeah, it was basically, we were told we'll email you the documents.
Yeah. And then we got a letter in the mail. It's the only place where to go to get them.
And then following up on the Semerick meeting that we actually held in Mansfield a few weeks ago, we did get the copy of that tape. And we've been running that on the local cable channel several times. And it'll continue to be broadcast until probably the end of the month. Just letting people know what's been going on with some to keep everybody informed as to what the progress is in that project. We do have some ongoing recruitments right now, ongoing with the administrative assistant in the inspectional services department. I have a retirement occurring there shortly. And then the fire chief will be next. And right after that, the veterans agent. So we'll be following up on those pieces relatively soon. But I think probably the end of the month, we'll start the, with the fire chief process. So that's, that's the goal at this point.
End of August.
End of August, that's, that's the goal. So those are, those are the things, the only things I had. I don't know if Mike, Mike is sitting in tonight? Mary Beth is away tonight, but she'll be due back by the end of the week. Any thoughts, Mike, before you?
Give him enough airtime.
He's making me look bad wearing a purple tie today.
I would want to echo Bill's excitement about the human services director and say that it was very challenging, that the three people that came to the finals, they were superstars. So, you know, it was, it was tough. But this guy really does bring some really interesting new potential to the town. And one of the things we talked about was, you know, where their human services, what they're doing in this intergenerational center, where this fellow is in Randolph, when he comes here. We don't want to lose anything that we're already doing with seniors, with youth, with veterans. We only want to gain. So we want our programs to be of same quality or better. And that's the message we talked about when we met with the, with the Council on Aging staff yesterday. And so the last few weeks or so have been really busy and exciting for me as I've worked alongside Bill. really busy and exciting for me, as I've worked alongside Bill and with Mary Beth on really getting ramped up on the human services, human resources side. I know that was a concern with the board, and that's the area where I'm going to have the steepest learning curve. And it's exciting, and getting in, you know, my promise has been that I'll be honest, upfront, work hard every day, and represent citizens of this community and the employees who work here. And, you know, I just want to reassure folks of that, and that the staff here has been really working hard to train me, and I've been working between the departments and the administration and learning everything I can. And I feel very fortunate, and I think the town is fortunate, that there is a six-month training period that I'm one month into. And so I think we're in a good place. And one other thing, as far as the human services director, Mark will be coming here to meet with you in two weeks. It's all about reintegration. That's something that I've talked about for the last eight years with veterans. It's all about reintegrating people into the community. I think it's very similar with our folks as the age, especially someone who's lost a spouse, who are starting to maybe get isolated. It's about getting reconnected and reintegrated back in the community. And I think the more we can integrate people of different generations, different ages, and different experiences, I think the stronger and better our community becomes. So I thank you for this opportunity, and I think we have exciting things coming our way.
All right, action items.
Move to approve today's Columbus collection of donations at road entrances of the Common on October 6, 2018, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Alls in favor?
Move to approve a block party application by Stacy Miller of 12 Carroll Drive on September 22nd, 2018, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., with a reindeer of September 23rd, 2018.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Alls in favor?
Move to approve a gift donation of $5,273.03 from the American Legion Post 93 for the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial.
Second.
Motion made. Under discussion, Mike, I believe this is the last piece to the puzzle to complete.
It is. So the goal starting out was $60,000, and that was going to be to get everything that is on the Common right now, plus lighting, plus benches and landscape. And so the American Legion has stepped up very generously and said, we'd like to, you know, close that, the gap to bring you up to 60,000. So the next thing is to move forward. We're already talking about prices on the benches, going back to the contractor who's provided the beautiful monument that we already have, and then we'll be talking next about the electrical and landscaping. So that gets us there.
So two weeks ago, we approved a $20,000 donation from them. Two weeks later, $5,000. So again, can't thank the veterans enough for stepping up and taking care of this. Motion made. Discussion. Any other further discussion? Seeing none. Alls in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation of $100 to the Council on Aging Human Services from Walter Gorman for programs and services to benefit the community.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Alls in favor?
Sorry, my computer's freezing up. It really slowed off from one to the next. Okay. Move to accept a gift donation of $210 to the Council on Aging Human Services from Friends of Foxborough seniors to be used towards Tai Chi programs.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Alls in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation of $50 to the Council on Aging Human Services from Marshall Lewicki in memory of Bob Loomis.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Alls in favor?
Move to approve a gift donation of $36 to the Foxborough Fire Department from Charles and Jean Albert.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Alls in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation of $100 to the Boydin Library from Walter Gorman as a general donation.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Alls in favor?
Aye.
That's it.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to adjourn second. Any further discussion on adjourning? Alls in favor? All right. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.